And a drum roll, please. Good. Well, happy Wednesday, everybody. I forgot what toy was on. Welcome to our town hall. I'm very excited as I always am, as everybody knows, to be here tonight. I want to start off with another Kevin Kylie quote that I find quite appropriate for the Arabian. It goes like this. A new anti-recall ad ends with the six most ominous words I've ever heard. Gavin, Governor Newsom is just getting started. And it really is some of the most ominous words you ever heard. And I got news for you Gavin. We're more than just getting started. We're on full throttle to make sure they out of office. I also want to comment before I let Orin have some airtime is. I was talking to a gentleman you saw earlier, Larry Gersten, who's a PhD actually who comments for NBC. He was in the first video segment we showed tonight. And he reached out to me for an NBC segment earlier in the week and he's been studying the recall for literally since last February, since Orin and I started and the rest of the team started this. And he actually says, you know, I keep staying on the air and we've got various segments showing that. This is a very close race. They're really missing it. And for everybody out there saying, hey, no, I'm tired. I want to take a little time off. What can I do? Let me give you a little bit of statistics that are getting this place that I was grading with Larry yesterday. Understand that only about thirty. Thank you, Orin, for the plug for the bear. Understand, there are about thirty-six percent of the Democrats that shall we say are quasi interested in what's going on. Thirty-six percent. For those of you keeping score at home, that's approximately three million voters. Seventy-five percent of the Republicans are really excited about what's going on. For those of you keeping score at home, that's about four million votes. So right now, if I was to put that in and shake that up, the election in favor of Newsom is four million to three million. But the reality is, we have to get again, as I keep saying, over and over and over again, that fourteen percent which are undecided, even if they're going to vote or not, out there to vote in this election. And we now have about sixty, well, a little bit about sixty-five days to do that. So everybody out there, I'm going to say this fourteen times. I'm going to say it on the radio show. Friday night, I'm going to talk about events. Do something, even if you're sitting there right now, listen to this. Many watch it on Facebook. We had about twelve hundred viewers and about three hundred on YouTube last week. After watching this, share it on your own ecosphere with some of your friends. Share it on your homepage so your people pick it up. We built this by again, the exponential power of telling people about it. You saw earlier, Newsom's got more money, but he ain't got more guts. And we'll talk about more about what we're doing in the Friday hearing in just a bit. But Orin, let me give you a chance to get off a shot or two here. And Orin, you're on mute. Orin, you're on mute.
There you go. I unmuted. I am muted. All right.
I'm on him again. No.
I'm glad to be here, folks. We have an exciting show ahead. We have Annette Lundquist, our guest speaker, who's going to be coming in and talking about her developing group that she has down in Bakersfield area and, you know, some plans that we have moving forward. You know, folks, it's been a long road. This time last year, I was encouraging people to get out and circulate the petition. I'm so glad to have that behind us. We have made it to the, the milestones are just clicking away. September fourteenth is going to come and go quicker than we know. It's going to be here and gone. And the decisions that we make at that point are going to affect the future of our state dramatically, one way or another. Win, lose, or draw, changes coming to California. It's up to us to get the word out, to get the vote out, to make sure that people are motivated to get out and fill out their ballots, turn them in, get them in and, and also become poll watchers. Work with the Election Integrity Project, work with, you know, Linda Payne and, and get out there and become monitors in your county and do what we have to to make sure that we hold their feet to the fire and, and we don't allow the sort of corruption that we've seen take place in our voting systems. I'm not done, Mike.
I know. That's why I went like that. It's my mental to make a comment about.
Okay. I, you know, Mike and I are good at organizing the crowd. We're good at organizing the network, rallying the crowd, getting people together to get the job done as far as what we have to do. We've never been good at raising money. We've never been good at that. We suck at it. We're horrible at fundraising. Okay? If, if my family depended on my ability to go out and make a buck doing this kind of stuff, they would all starve. And, okay. I had an epiphany today and I realized it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. Bloomberg put billions of dollars behind his own campaign. John Cox, he's putting seven million dollars of his money behind his own campaign. There's a lot of money being floated around Caitlyn Jenner. There's one candidate out there who has the support of a hundred percent volunteer efforts. I'm not endorsing anybody particular at this moment because we cannot do that on this show. Because as in my official capacity, as the chairman of a primarily formed committee, I cannot and will not endorse any particular candidate. As a private citizen, talk, talk to me one-on-one, you'll hear a different story. You might get a different story from Mike as well. But what I'm saying is that money isn't everything. You can't buy happiness. You have to earn it. And that's what we're doing here. We're earning it. We're bringing our state back to its roots. We're bringing our government back to the foundation that it was created on. And that's of the people, by the people. We're not done. Gavin, here's your warning. It's a promise. We're not done with this recall. Now, we, they've made claims that, you know, we're threatening their foundation, their progressive values. And to Asa Smith, however you pronounce his name, Gavin Newsom and company, it's not a threat. It's a promise and it's a promise for our future. We're doing away with your values because your values have driven the Golden State into the gutter. And we're going to draw it back out of the gutter and begin to rebuild it with this recall election that's going to take place September fourteenth. September fourteenth is a hinging moment in our future. What we do now depends on what happens then. So, that being said, get out and vote, folks. Let's have some fun. Let's rebuild our state. Let's make it happen. And let's get together, bring everybody together. This is a movement of the people, by the people, for the people. And there is something resonating in our state that is galvanized people that have brought people together from all walks of life, from all ethnicities, all races, all cultures, from the entire political spectrum. Because they know something's wrong. They know something is grossly out of tune. And we need to fix it. This is where that correction may happens. We're taking over. We're the parties. Where the, the CAGOP and the Democrat Party and the politicians have failed us. The people of California are stepping up to take this action to reclaim their state. That's all I got, Mike.
All right. Let me throw in a couple of things here as we keep rolling. One of the reasons, and Larry Gersten said this earlier, and I'm using him because he has a PhD after his name, which allegedly makes him way smarter. But here really what we have to say. You'd be amazed at the number of people in California that are not cognizant of what's going on. And Orin just said it the best, stole one of my lines, apparently. We've been working together too long. Voter, election integrity, yes, stuff exists. But stop letting the press suppress you from getting out to vote. And I don't mean you on this call, by the way, what I'm going to talk about next. This is the reason you need to get out there and talk to everybody. Go to the events that we're talking about, bring people, share on Facebook, distribute trifles, get the photo registration base. Because it's the people that don't know what's going on. Again, here is the election process. First off, there are no official candidates until July sixteenth. There's about fifty that have indicated that they want to run. Want a list? I've said this before. Go to Ballapedia. That's where I get a lot of information. Don't tell anybody. It's really easy to find on Google and you will find a list of people and how they've registered. But the more people that run, the better. Again, and we're here on the call goes matter. We know this. Other people don't. Here's the process. Vote yes to remove Gavin. Vote for one of the other candidates. Sounds real simple to you on the call, but again, the number of people that aren't cognizant of it would blow your mind. Hold on, Orin, I'm not done. Just had to throw that in. Also, understand as evidence of that, that's the reason his Gavin is suing himself, basically. And we're protesting in court, thanks to Eric Early's law firm, giving us a little help there on Friday. Is that a rah rahs this boom ba?
No, that's a, that's exactly what I wanted to comment on.
Oh, well, thank you. Again, we've been working together way too long.
I still want to comment when you're done.
I will let you give you the chance, okay?
But do I need to get my French laundry knives out to cut my way into this conversation?
You probably do here, but understand it's important to Gavin. Because you would say, Larry said this in the segment, but it's really funny. Well, who the hell doesn't know he's a Democrat? Those of us here watching this say, well, no kidding. He's a Democrat. The number of people, you all have them out there at the tables. Don't tell me that none of you ran to him. Said, who's Gavin Newsom? Isn't that scary? Even if it was one out of twenty, oh, he's our governor. Okay, Orin, back to you. Roll the stus and then doing that because we have a lot to cover.
We've got a lot to cover and it's okay if we go a little long, folks. We own this show. So the, the fact is, if, what's that?
We do?
We do. If, if it wasn't so important reaching out to the uninformed voter, Gavin Newsom wouldn't be fighting tooth and nail to get a D placed next to his name. So he can be properly identified. Ergo, identity politics, because there are a lot of people out there that just vote R, they just vote D, and they don't care who. The, the Democrats are working overtime to make sure he is the only one on that list of, on that ballot that has a D next to his name. He's not going to be included in the list of people we have to choose from. Don't get me wrong. But there will be his name mentioned on the question number one. And under question number one, there'll be a D next to his name, maybe. Eric Early is helping us and we are filing an objection to his motion because Gavin Newsom is seeking to overrule, overturn and override a law he signed into place. Again, proving the rules only exist for others and not him. And this is exactly why we're going to remove him from office because he's ruling over us and not for us. Back to you, Mike.
You know, again, when people ask you how many people are running for governor, this again is my answer all the time. There are forty-three people that withdrew their signatures after a big campaign, like Gavin, in the thirty-day period. It's very easy to figure. There's way more people running for governor than Gavin got to withdraw their signatures. Okay? So that's the reality of it. To someone else on the chat, again, I'm not stressed on election integrity cheating. I can't control it. Here's what I do want to do. Two point one million people, somebody on there is absolutely right. I want you to think about this. Two point one million people signed the petition. We, with what we've assembled with the database, with the events that we're doing, for every person that signed a petition, and you all did it out there, we need to get to an additional four people. That will be eight million people. That will be eight million votes. That will take this election. Statistically, it will happen if we, the people, make it happen. Okay? It's very simple. Everything else coming at you is hyperbolic. Orin, I, the team, all of you got it done because we stayed focused on making sure we got the signatures. Now we need to stay focused, since it's our show, on polishing his ass off. All right? Susan, I'm going to bring you in. But you're going to have to unmute. How you doing, Susan?
I'm good. How are you?
All right up as usual, Susan.
Yeah, I see that.
So.
I was confused begin with because we have a Susan Lundquist. It's our guest tonight. And Susan Hurd is also a, a common feature on our show, but you had me going there for a minute, Mike.
Sorry, we have two Susans. We've had two mics.
Yeah, there's Susan to speak. That's fine with me.
No, we just want you to talk about real quick what we talked about on the volunteer call on Monday. Making sure that people get their orders in to get merchandise.
Right.
We do it. Get funnel to Robin, who's not on the call tonight. Make sure to register for the database request form.
We have a shared drive merchandise order farm. And we also have a direct order form. So contact your county coordinator or your regional manager to order these supplies. We have bumper stickers, flyers, flags, lawn signs, pamphlets, or mittens envelopes for donations. And if you don't know who your RM or your county coordinator is, send me an email and I will let you know. Let me know what county you're in. Susan dot recall Gavin twenty twenty at gmail dot com. Also, um, I want to say personally, I am behind Kevin Kylie one hundred percent for governor. And we're looking for volunteers to help with his campaign. So again, my email is Susan dot recall Gavin twenty twenty at gmail dot com. If you're interested in volunteering on the Kevin Kylie campaign, send me an email. And this is me personally. I don't, this is outside of recall Gavin twenty twenty dot com.
Because Orin and I are packed member.
And that was, that was unrehearsed and unexpected, Susan. But thank you very much. And yeah, you are eligible to, to say whatever you want because you're not a board member. And you're not a proponent in this recall. God bless you. And you know what? As citizens, we all have our first amendment right to petition the government with our redress. And you're exercising your first amendment rights. I do want to correct myself. Annette.
I knew I was going to do it for you.
I know. Okay. But with good explanation, I worked for twenty-five years with Susan Lundquist, Sergeant Lundquist out at Woodland PD, a great friend of mine and a beautiful person. I miss working with her dearly. And every time I see Annette's name and, you know, I always wonder if they're sisters because they look so much alike.
So basically having flashbacks from your officer days.
I, you know what? A little PTSD maybe. I would never claim that though.
All right.
So Annette, my apologies. God bless. And I, I, I'm sorry that I made the guffaw.
And before we roll to net, I wanted just one more thing about what Susan said. Okay? Look, everybody out there, if you're watching this on Facebook. All right. Recall Gavin twenty twenty dot com backslash data request. We'll send you voter information. You must lead with information about the recall. Then you can talk about whatever you want, freedom of speech. But these merchandise, the trifles, the signs, the remittance envelopes and the door hangers are available and will ship to you in four days. Get us your address, request the data with the form. We're going to email you to a by zip code. We're making this as easy and painless as possible. We just need to go get them. And I'll talk about that after Annette is on the air. Annette, I'm going to let Orin introduce you since he apparently doesn't know your name.
Annette, thank you so much for joining us. You, you've been, you know, kind to host myself and, and others speaking at your events down there. You have a wonderful group that you're growing. You're up to about three hundred members now, as I understand it. And go ahead, introduce yourself. Tell us a little bit about what you've got going on in Bakersfield and why it's so important for people to become involved in these kinds of groups in the community because that, how that helps.
Well, Jack, it's really good to see you and thank you for having me. I knew a Jack Heatley. No, I'm just kidding. I don't know where to begin because I am in the recall. I'm a member of that team, the current team. And I'm also first vice president of Bakersfield Republican Women. And so I kind of go back and forth. But I met Orin and Mike on the screen a year ago. Our very first pop-up event was July third and we haven't looked back since then. We've been at it for a year. We have an incredible team here in Kern County led by Flor Paul, who's a little firecracker. And she's done an excellent job of leading us. And we had an event planned for this Saturday, July tenth. But we're having an exceptional heat wave. And I ordered swamp coolers, misting fans, but you know what? A hundred and ten plus degrees just can't compete. The fans can't compete with that kind of heat. So we are going to postpone. We're not canceling. We're postponing until August and we will have an indoor venue at that time. So we're hoping to get Mike and Orin and the gang to come to Bakersfield. We, we are an incredible group of people. We've worked hard. We work together. We take care of each other. We support each other. I've met wonderful people. And, and you're right, Mike, when we have our pop-ups and we talk to people, I've learned so much about the city I live in that I didn't really know before. Met a lot of patriots, a lot of people behind the scenes who are keeping this going. And there's so much enthusiasm. There is resolve in what we're doing. But I'm a little concerned in this addresses a little bit what Mike and Orin were talking about. I went to a couple of my doctor's offices with donation forms because we're trying to keep the donations going. And one of them, intelligent man said, well, I voted. And I said, when did you vote? He said, well, I, I, my whole family voted. We signed. And I said, that was the petition. Oh, that wasn't the vote. So we realized that we have to educate the public because the last time there was a recall was two thousand and three. I wasn't paying attention in two thousand and three. A lot of people who are voting now weren't even old enough to vote in two thousand and three. So it's very, very important that, and that's what we're starting to do with our pop-ups and our yard signs and our bumper stickers, is educate the public about the vote, about the ballot that's coming out, that they have two sections. They have to vote yes to get him out and then they can select who they want to replace him. But that is going to be a curve that I believe the phone calls are going to make a difference with that in educating the public about getting out to vote and not mailing your ballot. Most of the people I talked to do not put them in the mail. They take them to the elections office, which brings up another point. We have gotten our members, our Republican women members activated there. We've got, tried to spark them and they're doing a great job. We have four members who have applied to work in the elections office. Not as an observer, not at the poll, in the elections office. They went through the hiring process. They've been interviewed. So we're hoping that we'll have some eyes and ears inside the actual elections office. And if every county did that, if every county got their people, you have to apply three months ahead of an election. You find out how they hire at your county elections office. Now with us, they go through three employment agencies. And then there's another way. They go online. You find out how they hire. You get your people to apply for the job. Then they go through the process. When you are hot, when you go through the interview, you say, I want to work at the next election in your office. So they mark that down and hopefully they interview and then hire you. If all of us did that all over California, then we wouldn't have to worry so much about the election integrity, which I know is an issue. It's kind of hard after the fact when the votes are being counted, you're watching over someone's desk or through a glass. And oftentimes you can't tell what's going on. And if there is a discrepancy or some problem, what good does it do then? What I'm saying is it's important to have the observers, but it's even more important to get people into the registrar's office, into the elections office working. And everyone can do that. Okay? So that's one of the things we've been doing. We are training our, our people with the I three sixty to call. We're going to do that. And we're doing anything.
Can I break in right there?
Yes.
There's a, a good intro. You're working with Ann Dunsmore and Rescue California. People can go to rescueCalifornia.org to sign up to volunteer and phone bank. And they can also get materials to canvas neighborhoods and things like that. You're welcome to talk about.
Well, well, that's, that's not happening through Rescue California especially. We have Paul Olson is from Tulare.
And Paul, Paul, Paul is, he's.
With that too. I know. I understand.
But go ahead, give the contact information that you have. Ellen, Ellen Whitella is also listening in. She's part of that group. And, you know, go ahead and promote that as much as you like.
Well, you know, I'm sorry. I don't have all the facts here about that. Maybe Ellen can contribute that, put it in the chat room. But Paul would like to train. He could do it by Zoom. He could do it in person. We need all of the Republicans to get out and vote. We need, if we get eighty percent of the Republicans to vote and then, you know, even if only twenty percent of the Democrats and independents vote, then we will win. But the, the Republicans have to get out and vote. That is imperative. They cannot stay at home. They cannot ignore their ballots. And I know that from the pop-ups, people, well, people will say, well, we, there aren't that many Republicans and there are more Democrats. No, 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 no. The Democrats and the independents were hurt just as badly as the Republicans and they feel it. In fact, we got a new member of Bakersfield Republican Women who switched parties from Democrat to Republican during the shutdown. She was so upset with what Newsom was doing. She changed parties, joined Republican Women, and she is on fire. So, you know, we can't discredit people just because they have a D or they're registered as Democrats. They are upset. They are angry also at, at Newsom, maybe even more so because they feel betrayed even more than we do.
You know, Annette, and we always welcome them and we're work, Mike and I are talking with the, the founder of the Walk Away Movement and Brandon Straka and so forth. And you know, there's two fields of thought. My first knee jerk reaction is stay in your party and fix it. Fix the party. You can abandon ship. Fix the party. You can abandon ship, jump ship and come over, you know, to the Republican side. But for people that are inclined, you know, my thought is stay with the Democrats and then fix it from the inside out.
She would be, she would be censored, Orin. She would be censored.
Absolutely.
She would be run out of town on a rail. And the only way is to defeat the Democrats. We can't. Right now you cannot reason. There's no negotiation.
Embrace, embrace those who want to join us and, and work together.
Right. I want to jump, I jump in for one second. Sorry. Welcome to our show. I've said before, in this particular election, okay, it's a great opportunity, no matter what side of the aisle I'm sitting this for 12 months ad nauseam. I'm going to add a layer to it that I said on our call to leave last night. Look, everybody hates Gavin. A lot of the Democrats hate Gavin. His family, which is 43, we now know probably isn't fond of him, but signed withdrawal slip. Okay? Here's the reality, right? This election will be won because of the following fact, if we reach out in this demographic. What demographic is that? Again, 33% of the people in California are 50 and older, actually 55, but let's roll with 50. They make up 46% of the people that vote. So when you stop somebody or see them on the street with our paraphernalia, the I-360, be at our data request form at the corner store, right? I suggest you not go to GameStop. That's probably a bad place to find people over 40. Okay. I've been there. You get my drift. You see those people, you don't have to ask them if they're Democrat or Republican. You can hand them a trifold. People over a certain age bracket are going to unite and take back this state. We spend a lot of time in politics. Sorry, Annette, I just got to ramble on about this, right? It's like, we gotta go to TikTok. Yeah. Cause all those people on TikTok are gonna vote. Ah, all right. No, they're not. Not in this election especially.
Right.
You see people on the street, simply hand them a trifold, give them a door hanger. And by the way, another great statistic is 60% of the people that vote, you ready for this, Annette? This shocking revelation to you, own houses. So in your neighborhood, most.
So far.
Well, that's my point. And they want to keep owning them. All right. They don't really give a damn if they're Democrat or Republican. They like to keep the roof over their head and their taxes not got too high and not pay six bucks a gallon. It's real simple. Give them what to put a door hanger on their door. I don't even care. Sorry, guys, at this point with 60 days left, the data is great. But if you just run around with their door hangers, you'll get it back to you, Annette.
Well, and here's, here's the deal. I mean, I don't know which way you want to go with this and I'm not sure what you want me to say, but, but I.
We'll either make it up as we go.
And if I don't, then you'll help me make it up. That's okay. The, the deal is that we have to, like you say, educate the public. They don't know who Gavin Newsom is and having the D behind his name. Because we, okay, we have Dolores Huerta here in Kern. I mean, this is her home. We have Sunrise Kern in Bakersfield. We have Gavin. We have George Soros probably trying to pay to get our wonderful DA knocked off in the next election. They're coming for Kern County. We know that because of who we are. So we're really aware of that. But the people, the people here are trained, if you see the D, then that's who you vote for. They don't know who it is. They don't know the name. They have no idea. But they know to look for the D and press that little whatever to vote for the D. Now, here's the other thing as well. Democrats, independents, Republicans have all been affected. One of the big, and I was so glad to hear this today on the Rescue California and then tonight. I feel for me, they talk about prioritizing your concerns. The number one thing for me is right now is safety. I am worried. Okay. I just applied for my CCW. I bought a gun, the whole thing. I can't carry my, my 12 gauge with me, so I had to get another one. But I, I, when he released 20,000 prisoners during COVID, I'm like, well, you said masks work. Give them all a mask and let them stay in jail. I mean, what's the deal with this? Then another 76,000 are going to be released. And that's not for stealing a pack of gum. Those are the people who are in for serious crimes.
20, 20,000 of which are in sentenced life without parole. They're what we call LWOP, L W O P, life without parole. The reason they are sentenced to life without parole is because they were found guilty of such heinous crimes. Society has imposed a sentence on them. They would never be eligible to be released to walk among us again. 20,000 of those inmates of the 76,000 are life without parole sentenced serving inmates. And I just want to say, there's only 115,000 inmates in California. I'm not yelling at you, Annette.
They, well, they closed one of the prisons here, one of the private prisons.
He's closed two prisons since he's been in.
One of them is in Kern County.
And the other one is the Susanville High Desert Prison. And what people don't know, and for those, just some background, Susanville is where the fire crews, the inmate fire crews were housed. The hot, the, you know, the, the hot shots.
Hot shots.
And, you know, we no longer have a robust inmate fire crew in California because this governor has released the bulk, if not all of the inmate. He closed fire camps while the campfire was still burning. He released the inmates that were fighting those fires while California was still on fire. So thi- this governor makes bad decisions. He's, he's bad for California. He's bad for business. He's soft on crime. And the only buddy, the only people whose lives have gotten better since he's been in office are the prisoners that he's releasing.
Well, the one I, what I've decided, Orin, and I don't know Gavin personally. I've never been around him, although we have a mayor who follows him around. I've never met him, but I've decided he's not very bright. The man does not have a high IQ. He's his own worst enemy. He continued, oh, the, the part that I loved was that they wanted the, the election sooner because they were concerned about his staff members making mistakes that will be blamed on Gavin. Well, right. So the fires, my niece was involved in a fire last year in Napa. She had just given birth and they had to evacuate their house with a newborn baby. It was horrible. She's a Democrat. I don't know if she's still a Democrat, but she was pretty upset about it. So this has touched everybody's life. Every, and that was, that was during, during, and then during COVID, it got even worse. And I think that it speaks volumes that he wants to maintain his sense of power with the emergency. Well, you know, the variant is coming, the COVID variant. And we know what that means. We know that he's going to try, but he can't be that stupid to try to lock us down again. Try to get us to wear masks because I think this time people will just not do it. I really think, I know in Kern County, he's going to get a lot of pushback. That's why he doesn't like Kern.
You, you have a flourishing group down there. I was so honored and, and I, I, it was, it was a true honor to be able to come down and be invited to speak at your group. And the energy in the room was just incredible. Good group of people, great food, good company. And, you know, it was a wonderful time. Give us a little bit of insight of, you know, how can people in your area become involved in your group? Do you have a website? Do you have a way of contacting you or what's your contact information?
Okay.
Wrapping it down, we got a.
Okay. My, you can just use my telephone number, 661.
Careful with that. Careful with that. This is a public.
Then what contact information do you want me to give you?
Well, do, do you have an email? That would be best.
Oh, okay. So that's safer than the phone, huh? Okay.
Your phone.
This goes out.
So far I live in a pretty safe area. So I, but it's changing. But, okay. D. Lyken Dog, Lundquist, L O N D Q U I S T at gmail.com. That's my email address. And you're right, our Bakersfield Republican Women Group is up to about 310 members now. And we're one of the largest in the state and we're still growing. We're active. I'm going to be president starting in January and we're just going to hit the ground running. We're going to hit the ground running because you know what? To be honest with you, the Republican Party is not doing a whole lot. I'm sorry. I've been disappointed in some of them. And it looks like the Bakersfield Republican Women are going to have to do their part in either getting some movement or taking on the lead ourselves. We are encouraging our members to run for office. We have our members lined up to go to school board meetings, city council, county supervisor meetings. They're going to apply to be on all the boards that are in the county water board, land, everything. We're attending the redistricting meetings, the public meetings where they're redrawing the lines. Now that's something you really have to watch is the way they redraw the, the boundaries. That's what Eric Holder did when he left office and did a major job with his redistricting for the Democrat Party. So there's a lot going on here and we're very active and we will continue to be so. So let me give you the web, let me give you the website for Bakersfield Republican Women, please.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely.
It's Bakersfield, that you know how to spell Bakersfield, bakersfieldrwf.org. R W F dot org. And we are on Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, all of those good things. Of course.
Just like, just like I said, you know, during our meeting, you know, Mike and I and others were, we, we've, we started the recall, we managed it, we drove it. But it was really driven by the women of California, the angry mama bears out there who were just pissed off at this governor for his, you know, support for his, you know, the sexual.
That was a big one.
Signing SB 145 into law, which made, you know, certain sexual offenses not eligible for registration. Broadening the scope from, you know, I think it was, you know, not unlawful for a sexual encounter with a child as long as the age difference was less than 10 years.
Right, right. Now, we did not, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we did not get into education, the teachers union. I was in education for 35 years. I saw it from the inside. I'm looking at it now. And I mean, that's a whole other topic. The teachers unions are doing. I was one of the first people to opt out of my union when I saw that my money was going towards Democrat candidates that I absolutely did not support. And that was on the Bakersfield level. That was the small level. And they have way too much power. The teachers union is running the country right now.
That's a.
And they're running Gavin Newsom in California.
Mafia.
Yeah, they're running him in California. He's terrified of them and it's all about the money. It's all about the money.
Couldn't agree more.
Sorry, I will, you have to cut me off.
It's always a pleasure and thank you for joining us and coming on board tonight. And we look forward to working with you in the future and, and the great state of California as we move forward and, and we help rebuild the state from the ground up. It's people like you warriors out in the field like Flor, like Ellen, you know, down in, in your area that are the pushers and movers and the shakers that are getting the job done. Because without you guys, we are nothing. We are, we stand together and you know what? Let's get it done.
One, one more thing before I go. I've known people who have moved and I said, you know what? I was born and raised here. I love this state. I'm not leaving. I'm staying and I'm fighting. And they are not going to run me off. That's what I'm going to do. And everybody on the call, everybody on the call, Orin Heatley received a standing ovation at our meeting. And that doesn't happen very often with the Bakersfield Republican Women. Orin got a standing ovation.
I, I actually, I was taken back because I had never had a standing ovation as I was introduced before.
Right. He's, he was our, he's our hero and we told him so.
And God bless you. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike?
Okay, a couple of things. There's a lot of rumors running around right now, and I've said this before on the air. Gavin is campaigning hard, but the rumor that due to Gavin's campaign, there's a shortage of hair gel in California is merely a rumor. Okay. Now that I've gotten that out of the way, let me get down to business.
I, I do, I do have, so there's a shortage of coins. And this has only happened since Gavin Newsom took office. But I really think that it's just because they're afraid of change.
Ba da boom, ba da bang. He's been waiting to use that one. And he wrote it himself. All right. Now that we've gotten that part out of the way, let me tell you, I just got something from Riverside. Okay? Here's a couple of realities. There are, again, go to the events page. Please direct people to town hall. Please direct them to the radio show. We get asked a lot of time, why do you continue to do the radio show? Because the whole idea is to have a platform. We have to get out there with an anchor platform that people could tune into anytime. Now, one of the things we're talking about is this, everything I talked about tonight. Regardless of what the event's for, it's a, the recall team is going to be at the Capitol on Saturday morning, right, Orin? Okay. I'm flying in right after the show or the next morning, or whatever the heck it is. All right? So be at the Capitol at 10 o'clock if you can. It's important that we stand united. That is July 10th, 10 AM on, what is it? The West steps, Orin?
West steps.
Okay. Be there. Next in Riverside. And there's a lot of events taking place. Okay? And it's up to you to help us publicize them. We have an events page. We started again, but don't depend on us. Depend on yourself because that's the power that you control. July 23rd, Don Dixon, Don Dick, sorry, at the Republic, running the Riverside Republican Party. There's a huge event in an airplane hangar in Chino, okay? That's being organized now, a live band candidates from various monitors speaking. I'm going to be there. It's going to be 750 to 1,000 people is the goal and more. These are the kinds of things. No Cal, SoCal, Central Cal, God bless you. San Diego, everywhere you go, everything counts. And, you know, we're asked all the time, what are you going to do about this? What are you going to do about that? I'm going to say this again to end the show. The power lies within you. Each one of you watching, each one of you listening, whether you spread the word on Facebook, Twitter, however you get the word out, whether you tell somebody about the radio show, order merchandise, get it distributed, help us get donations if you can, but do everything you can to get the word out. Don't assume someone else is doing it. Don't assume that the person you've been talking to at the dry cleaner is about picking up your dry cleaning, knows about the election, knows what's going on. They don't. It's time to take our state back. This is the opportunity. We busted down the door, helped guide people through it. It's up to each one of you to help us together, get something done and stand united as Californians. God bless. Good night. We'll see you Friday night in the air. We'll see you Saturday morning at the Capitol. Friday night to the French Laundry, 7 PM. Tune in, tell your friends about it. We're out. Friday night to the French Laundry, 7 p.m., tune in, tell your friends about it, we're out. Have a nice night.
Night, everyone.
Good night.